The meeting, this is being audio and video recorded. It will be uploaded to YouTube and it will also be on Channel 9 at some point. Could we please all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing, please.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing. I ask for a moment of silence in memory of Virginia Lederus, Edith Howard, residents of Dayton, and also for Lieutenant Jason Menard, West Fire Department, who was killed in the line of duty during the last week. And in their memory, we will observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next meeting is December 11th, and at that meeting, we'll be discussing the tax rate and figuring out the tax rate for the residents of Dayton, as well as the businesses. And our meeting after that will be December 18th, so we're not going to have a meeting the 2nd or 4th Wednesday of December because it falls on Christmas Day, 4th. We're here today in the, what we call the Old Town Hall, or the Grange Hall. It was built in 1969, and this is the anniversary, this month is the anniversary, the 150th anniversary of the opening of the Old Town Hall. And I've asked that town historian Myrna Santos to come and speak to us about this and give us a little bit of history, so I'd appreciate it, Myrna.
Thank you for asking me. I kind of like to talk about this building as I sort of go in here. The grandparents were members of the Grange, and I spend a lot of time here. Child. First, let me say thank you to all of the selectmen for the opportunity to tell folks a bit about this old building. This was Dayton's first actual town hall. It was originally called the New Town House, in 1869, coming after churches were separated from town government and no longer supported by taxation. The first town meeting held in this building took place in November of 1869, 150 years ago this month. This is a great story of town history and Dayton's determination that leads up to the day of the opening. In 1712, for a town to be created and incorporated in the province of Massachusetts, of which the Massachusetts Bay Colony was a part, there were two primary requirements. First, there had to be a church, with a meeting house for both religious and government activities; and second, a full-time, town-paid minister. The cost of maintaining the meeting house was shared by the town and by the church until about 1800, when church and state activities were separated and the church was no longer required to participate in maintaining a meeting house. Dayton's first meeting house was no doubt a very primitive structure, probably with laws, and it was situated on the west side of the old Bristol Path in the area that is now a one-way section of Elm Street. The Old Town Cemetery is on the hill where that first meeting house stood. Dayton's first minister, Reverend Nathaniel Fisher, came to the South Precinct of Taunton in 1710. He was ordained here, and he became Dayton's minister, serving this town for 55 years. His town provided home, also originally a log structure, stood where the brand-new police station is being used today. I think Mike wrote this, the police station wasn't completed yet. Both Berkeley and Asuna Knack were then part of Tom Dayton, and those residents had to cross the Taunton River for Sunday services as well as town meetings, which at that time were an all-male institution. Church attendance at the meeting house was required. It usually lasted all day, and all families attended church without question. The locations of each of the first two meeting houses were inconvenient from the perspective of travel, I think you can understand that, and especially from across the river. So Berkeley left Dayton to become its own town in 1735, and Asuna Knack became part of Berkeley some years later. Dayton's first meeting house, on Elm Street, burned in 1767 under mysterious and questionable circumstances, and the second, known as the Buck Plain Meeting House, was built west of what is now Pine Street, near the corner of Oak Street. However, when, in 1814, this town was divided into two towns, Dayton and Wellington, new town boundaries found the Buck Plain Meeting House in the town of Wellington. As a result, Dayton for many years held religious services and meetings in homes, in barns, in a store, in a schoolhouse, and even in farm fields. But in 1826, after 14 years, the town of Wellington joined the town of Dayton, Indiana. But by that time, the Buck Plain Meeting House was in a state of disrepair and unserviceable, so a new town building was needed. This would be called a townhouse, fully town-funded, built in 1826. So several years went by, and they were always meeting in fields and barns and wherever. Although there had already been two meeting houses, there had been a long-time dispute as to where the meeting house for the town should be located. Now, men from all parts of town weighed in with suggestions on the best location for a new townhouse. I notice it says "men" in all parts of town, women did not. Finally, a compromise decided that it should be built near the middle of town, between the north and south Dayton buildings, somewhere at or near what was called the Upper Four Corners, which is the corner of Center Street and Somerset Avenue. And so, at the annual town meeting of March 7, 1869, Article 2 was brought up, and it read as follows: "I, Noel Simmons, do make a motion that the selectmen buy the land at or near the Upper Four Corners and have the power to let the work of the building out by contract according to specifications, cost of land and building, $3,500, and to be completed by November next." This is March. Meeting articles then authorized the funds, named the principals in charge of carrying out the decision, and named a committee to procure plans, estimates, and select a specific location. Before the month of April 1869 ended, less than a month later, the committee submitted it to board. It reads in part: "We select, at the location, one-half acre land owned by Silas Dean Briggs on the east side of the main road, 300 feet north of the four corners, eight rods wide and 10 rods deep." Building plans were then drawn by Andrew M. Waldron of Dayton. The cost figures are interesting. The land cost was $100. The foundation cost, but the stone was given by Silas Dean Briggs, that foundation cost was $100. The complete building, $3,000. The building wall, 18 rods, $50. Painting, two coats, $134. Hitching, posts, and grating, $56. Total cost to be, $3,500. Townspeople went to work right away, this is April, getting into the summer, and by September, the frame was up and a few boards were nailed in place. And then, this is New England, along came what the older generation referred to as the Great September Gale. The next morning, after that frame was up and the boards were in place, the beginning of construction of the new townhouse was flat upon ground. The Dightonians were undaunted. After all, it was New England, it was on the weather, and they had a task to complete and a goal to meet. So they went back to work with a vengeance, determined to meet their deadline. The townhouse was completed before November 1st for less than the appropriated $3,500, and it opened for use on the town meetings voted scheduled in November. For 150 years, this building has held a unique place in Dayton's history. One little-known fact is that the original townhouse also held Dayton's first public library, which occupied a small, modesty room just inside the entrance, where the bathrooms are right now. In its original location, the townhouse was used for Dayton's town meetings and government business until 1935, when the town completed the Dayton High School and Town Office's building, all in one, all in one building. Town government function moved into the high school, and town meetings were held in the auditorium. Also in 1935, the Dayton Rock Grange purchased the townhouse from the town for $1. The Granges constructed a basement northeast of the original location. They moved the building onto the foundation and added a heating system. They eliminated the carrot shed and hitching posts, shuts, no hitching posts, and left that area to become a parking lot for the high school. The building soon became generally known as the Grange Hall. It offered a cloakroom with toilet facilities, kitchen, and an enlarged stage platform, providing opportunities for community use. During the Grange tenure, there were various programs, shows and recitals, school functions, whist, public dances, scout troops used the building to ceremonies. It was always busy. And in fact, members of the Grand Army of the Republic were given a special right to use it six nights of every year of their choice for their own purposes. The following is quoted from a newspaper article written soon after the Granges took over the building in 1935. Quote: "The old townhouse, which has settled sizzling political arguments, given us a progressive educational system of unusual America, determined and decided a financial fortitude in the town, now satisfied to the thirst of the socially minor for gaiety, dance, whist, and will live on as an everlasting monument. In 1990, after 55 years, the Dayton Rock Grange dissolved, and the old townhouse was returned to the town for the cost of the legal fees. It was leased to the Intertribal Council of the Native Americans, who used and maintained it for 27 more years until the late summer of 2017, when they were asked by the town to vacate the building because of the town's need for additional office space. Although a formal application to place this building on the National Register of Historic Buildings was submitted by town historian Elaine Barley and the Historical Commission, the request was denied because the original building had been moved. On January 27 of 2019, this refurbished old building was officially open for the living cutting ceremony. Totally altered and irrevocably changed from its original historic self, this wonderful place, where much of Dayton's mid-19th and mid-20th century history was made, is once again a vital part of Dayton's day-to-day government activities, accommodating some of the ever-expanding needs of town government and offering again its historic meeting place. Today, the basement space, which was added by the Dayton Rock Grange 84 years ago, features new, modern office accommodations, which include the Board of Health, the Building Department, the Board of Appeals, the Veterans Agency, and additional meeting space. The old, single room we are in dates back to a time of almost total citizen participation and camaraderie, a community sharing of matters serious and lighthearted, for shared joy and sadness, work and fun. A place for work and a place for relaxation for all Dightonians. Change has stripped the main floor of much of its homey, old, omelet charm. Wallboard has replaced the 150-year-old interior walls. The small front room, which housed Dayton's original library, is no more. Gone is the small room on the north side of the stage, on the theater, that was used for stage effects for hundreds of plays and programs, a storage for props and such, and a staging place for performers. The historic, beautifully encrepded and carved grand piano that graced the south side of the stage for more than 100 years and was a focal point on many occasions, even in the days of town meetings, is no more. The original handmade wooden seating benches created by veteran craftsmen with primitive tools and their labor of love, which graced this room for more than 145 years, are gone. This fine main room, and indeed, the entire building, has stepped out of history into the 21st century, upgraded and altered to towns with electrics and more efficient methods. As we look ahead, we can only hope that with its new look and direction, Dayton's Old Town Hall, its new name in 2019, will continue to be a place where history is made, a place where future generations can one day come and view with awe what has been accomplished here for more than a century in this precious old building in the very special town of Dayton, Massachusetts. Thank you for asking, I appreciate your story.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Thank you, Myrna.
Thank you.
Public input. Public input.
Mr. Chairman.
Can you just go, you want to go ahead?
I just want to mention, I've mentioned this before to residents, about not dealing with office through the mail to change your electric supplier. Now, this one, this one really looks official. So, important notice, action requested. I got this in the mail this week, and the reason I'm mentioning this again is the new pitch is, change your electric supplier so you can go green. It means it costs a little more, but you're going green. And again, this erroneously states you can go back to your current supplier. This is not true. So I just urge everybody, if you're with National Grid and you're happy, stay where you are because you're under aggregation. This will cost you more, and you cannot go back to the aggregation program. So, going green sounds good, but you've got to be careful. So, this official document is nothing more than another advertisement to try to convince you to do something that's not in your best interest.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while Mrs. Santos is still here, I was approached by a member of the Historical Commission regarding the Historic Site Marker Program, so I just wanted to ask you if you had anything you wanted to say about it or announce it or anything.
Actually, I have resigned from the Historical Commission due to family circumstances, but I am aware of the marker program. I think it's something we need. I think it is something we should have pursued a long time ago and are glad we're doing something with it. We have had one in the past, and the markers were made of wooden car, and they're quite beautiful. There's one on the first house across the secondary Grand Street River down on Elm Street, and that's one you can readily see. There's another one on the John Puston House, which is behind Duncan Donuts on Old Sunset Avenue, and those are wooden. I believe that the Historical Commission was looking at metal ones, and I haven't seen the patterns or anything for those, but my only definite comment would be, go for it, it's a good idea.
It's on the agenda for our December 10th meeting.
Good.
For more information.
Thanks, Edith, for having me. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Do you need, can we just talk from the...
Sure, you can.
The, oh, Thomas Berkman from 376 Hunter Silver. I just had a question. Do you know the figure on the certified, it must be certified by now, the free cash? Would you happen to know that?
Is that before or after?
I don't know.
So we spent everything, not everything.
How about before?
We voted, I think, before, it was one million, 245. We spent all but $300,000 essentially, roughly, yes.
Yeah, I wasn't able, I did watch the meeting on YouTube, but I wasn't able to go. I was just curious.
We spent about $1 million in an hour.
Okay.
Just a point of information, we didn't really spend it all. We did put $200,000 into the stabilization, capital stabilization, and was it $150,000 into OPE?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand. So, when we say we spent, you know, some of it had reallocated to the savings accounts, so to speak.
And there was $400,000 that we put towards the police station.
Yeah, you had to pay the bill.
And that came off the tax roll, so it's not being worn by the tax man.
Yeah, just had some of my neighbors, for some reason, ask me questions, and I try to get them answers, so I come here. They know that I go sometimes, so they don't go to the meetings and they miss the, I don't know, they could go on YouTube. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So of the, of the million, three, roughly $700,000 was truly not expended?
Yeah, it's kind of...
Right, it won't be raised in appropriate, so that will not affect the tax rate to pay off, to pay, make the payment on the police station this time tonight.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to ask that we go to 8A, since we have some people here. So entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we go to agenda item 8.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. So the board received a letter that I'm going to read. Board of Selectmen, it's Melanie Aristine, Town Administrator. I am requesting that the board accept our recommendation to hire Rebecca Mello as the full-time employee in the Treasurer Collector's and Town Clerk's office. We received approximately 10 resumes, and we interviewed the top three candidates. Although the other two candidates had some good qualifications, Rebecca was overall the most qualified to hold this position. Her experience in the town of Rainham was a definite plus in our decision. Her strong organizational skills, being highly motivated along with her experience, will make her an asset to both departments. Rebecca will be joining us at the Board of Selectmen meeting on November 20th, which is tonight. Your start date will be Monday, December 2, 2019. Thank you for your continued cooperation. This is Melanie Hathaway, Treasurer Collector and Sumner Derris, Town Clerk. Is there anything you would like to add to that?
I'm excited to have someone.
I think Becky, I like to say call Becky. She's just going to be a great team player. You know, our office is very different. I mean, we have two departments in there, but it's not like, you know, we always jump in to help whether it be Mary or you, so take a tax payment, and I think Becky's, you know, with her experience, she's, you know, she's very involved in the town of Rainham, and she can maybe say a little bit about that. But I just, it was just Mary and I interviewed three people, we never said anything to each other, and at the very end, we kind of looked at each other and said, Rebecca. You know, so it was just, you know, it's just, I think she's going to do well, you know, and she's going to be with Mary and I, so she better get to that.
Is there anything you would like to add to it?
I'd like to thank both of you for choosing me. I'm very excited to start. I think it's great, it's been a great opportunity, and I can't wait to...
Are you a resident of Rainham?
Of Rainham, yes.
Does the board have any questions?
No. I'm excited. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Rebecca Mello to the, I think the title is clerk, correct? To the, with the role of clerk to the Treasurer Collector and Town Clerk's offices effective December 2, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
We're finally fully staffed.
Welcome, welcome, good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome. If you need anything, don't hesitate to reach out.
Congratulations, thank you.
Well, thank you. Town Administrators report.
Good evening. I think this is a good time, I don't know, but I don't know, there it is. So we went up to bid previously before we, yes, and you, the chairman of the district, very made options regarding guardrail. You had selected the steel-battered timber guardrail, which is rated for high standards for MASTD. We went up to bid for that, and I'm happy to report a lowest bidder is actually in the budget, which is obviously a great thing for us. So my recommendation tonight is that we award this job to Munitech Inc. out of North Appleboro, with a $21,290.77.
Go ahead and question.
I can not recall how much the original was. Okay.
That's good. Do you have any questions?
Nope.
Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we award the Police Station Guardrail Bid to Munitech Incorporated of Attleboro for the amount of $21,290.77.
For a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
For you, Mr. Chairman.
Continue.
Continue. I do not have anything other else to report on the electric pole driveway issue.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Old Business, the second reading of the Cory policy. Is there any questions about? We just, yep, no, we discussed it last week.
Yes, I have mentioned that the Fire Department may need to be excluded. If that is not the case, they'll follow this, and if we feel it's problematic, we'll settle that. They will be included in this.
They will be included.
Was this something that went through the policy review board?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Open up the special town meeting warrants. These, these are the warrants.
These are the articles. You had said that it could be limited to the Fire Union contract, which for the most part it is. We unfortunately found an old bill, so from like voting that we didn't have a prior year bill, we did have one, came in late, so we did add that, if you would be okay adding that. Other than that, this is specific to the Fire Union contract?
Yep. So we close the special town warrants first, and then we discuss the warrants. Is that by motion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the special town meeting warrant.
For a second.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. So we'll go through each, each one. Do you know if the Finance Committee is going to take a look at this?
They will. I'm sorry, earlier I was just on the phone to the Finance Committee Chairman, he's unavailable that night, but they will start putting together their meetings. I have kept him and Moderator Mr. McKinnon involved, even though we know that Mr. McKinnon's not available, but they are being kept in.
When, this may be a little off-topic, when do we appoint a moderator? Are we going to be doing that before? I don't think we have a meeting before the next town meeting.
I have a note to do it at the meeting before a town meeting, where we would line that up, but if you need to have a special meeting, you can certainly...
It's usually done at a town meeting, on the floor at a town meeting. The town clerk will call the...
She opens it, right?
Correct, and then she'll call for nominations.
Did we contact someone that we had interest? Do you know if that person's... Okay. We do have somebody in mind, hopefully they're going to be available. Okay, so let's go through the articles. Obviously, the first one's okay, Article 2. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the total expenditure of $80,000, of which $40,000 is to be raised and appropriated, and $40,000 is to be transferred from the ambulance fund to fiscal, to fund fiscal year 20 personal expenses covered under the recently settled Firefighters Union Collective Bargain Agreement or take any action relative thereto."
Just, pardon, sorry.
Yep.
Just on that article, I want to state that this sum includes the salary charges as well as overtime and holiday pay estimate.
For this...
For this, this...
Fiscal year.
This is the total personnel for this fiscal year to be added.
Okay. Article 3 is to see if the town will vote to transfer from certified free cash in the treasury in an amount not to exceed $79,000 to be expended by the fire chief to purchase firefighters' gear for members of the fire department or take any action relative thereto. This is not replacement of gear, but it is in addition to the gear, so as we know, if they have to go to a fire sometime, you know, smoke and everything else gets on the gear, so we want a second set of gear.
The idea also behind this is that we would purchase a handful at a time, so that not the entire set has to be reprieved in 10 years when it expires, to sort of pace that a little bit and stagger.
So this is $79,000, cover all of it, but we're just going to stagger it, that makes sense.
Right.
In Article 4, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum not to exceed $100,785.72 to fund a settlement agreement with the Firefighters Union or take any action relative thereto." So this is actually a fund, so the public knows, this is funds that they should have, this is money that they should have received for the cost of the last two contracts, and they did not receive it. It was discovered at the negotiations that they had not been paid, well, they should have been paid. have been paid, and this is for some of the employees, not all of the firefighters, so this is correcting that, and it's important that the public know that if this is, if we don't agree to this, that they have an opportunity to take this to the attorney general's office, and if they prevail on that case, which I think they would prevail, it would be three times the cost of what this figure is here. And we've had discussions with our attorney on this, and he's also in agreement that we should fund this, so, just so the public knows where this, what this money is for. Article five is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds six hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-one cents to pay a prior year bill as follows. Pitney Bowes, side of the, for the treasurer's collector's office, and funding sources to raise and appropriate or, and/or transfer from available funds, and this is going to be, this is going to be free, it's going to be free cash, raise and appropriate. And obviously, article six is to act upon any other business that lawfully may be introduced at said meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the articles on the warrant for the special town meeting, December ninth, as read.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you. So we are awaiting town council review, and then motions, we'll send it right to the finance committee, and let them know when that.
We're going to announce the meetings, it's going to be in this building.
Actually, it's on the agenda, but this meeting is going to be December ninth at seven o'clock, it will be in this building here. These are the only articles that will be discussed at that meeting, but we welcome obviously the public to come and take, take a position on this, on these different articles. So the next item, well, this is happy news. This is a, we're recognizing the hundredth birthday of an individual resident of our town. Whereas, Mrs. Maria Concesao Ferreira Madeiras Barbosa, what a Portuguese name, you can't get more Portuguese than that name, I tell you.
I got, I got a lesson for you, Madeiras, today, Concesao.
Concesao.
So, Mrs. Maria Concesao Ferreira Madeiras Barbosa, born on November twenty-ninth, nineteen nineteen, in Vila de Franca, the capo, this is in San Miguel, St. Michael's, Azores, Portugal, came to the United States at the age of thirty-seven on June second, nineteen fifty-seven. Maria was one of eleven children, the only surviving child of her siblings. Whereas Maria chose to move to Dayton, Massachusetts in nineteen fifty-eight, and has lived in the town for over seventy years, raising her two children in the town. Seventy years. Fifty-eight? That doesn't, that's not right. Maria has two grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, many nieces, nephews, great nieces, great nephews, great-great nieces and great-great nephews. Whereas Maria worked at the Dayton nursing home for many years, and was also a successful seamstress at a factory in Fort River, Mass. Maria is part of Barbosa Farms in Dayton, which was established in the early nineteen hundreds. Maria rode tractors well into her eighties and continued picking crops in the nineties, exaltifying and embodying the town's proud agrarian heritage. Now therefore, the town of Dayton hereby recognizes Maria.
Concesao.
Concesao Ferreira Madeiras Barbosa on her one-hundredth birthday. And witness, whereas, the Board of Selectmen is here to set their hand and cause the seal of the town of Dayton to be affixed this twentieth day of November, twenty nineteen.
You were right, sixty-one.
Yes, since I was born in the fifties, and I'm not seventy, so I knew.
It was simple math for you. It's not possible.
So congratulations, and I hope she's doing well, and it's a milestone, not too many people make it to a hundred years old, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we issue a birthday citation to Mrs. Barbosa in recognition and honor of her one-hundredth birthday.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
I think maybe we can, so this was brought to my attention, I went to, I graduated from high school with one of her grandchildren.
Oh, I thought with her.
With one of her grandchildren, but I think maybe if we know of residents in towns less than, who are turning a hundred, maybe we can make this a practice going forward.
Yeah.
And, you know, to follow up, we need to know who the holder's person currently is in town.
Did you?
Yes, there is a cane, and I'm, maybe Mrs. Souza would know who, who it is.
Yes, it, it's just that the historic commission has made a decision that we're not going to be given the cane out anymore, because we're afraid we're going to lose it.
Exactly.
And I understand it's actually going to be in this hall at some point, this case can be made by the highway department, and we'll be giving something out.
Like a replica or something.
Either replica or sometimes the pins to designate that they have the Boston Post cane.
I know when I did the book for the town, I listed all of the recipients up to that point, so we've got a few years to add to the list.
I, I actually don't know who it is, but maybe we can discuss it at the historic commission. And her birthday, Mrs. Barbosa's birthday is also my grandson's birthday, so in ninety-two years, you can give my grandson a proclamation. Be appreciated.
Just jot that down for later.
Yeah, right.
We'll just trade out the names.
Future agenda.
Yeah. I don't think I'll be here.
I don't think any of us will. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is rescind the appointment of Samantha Maguire. Good afternoon, good afternoon Sergeant Cronin. I wanted to stop by saying a huge thank you for the amazing opportunity of being picked as one of the potential hires for Dayton P D. I am beyond appreciative at the opportunity I was given, but unfortunately, at this time, I will have to redraw. Would finish in my degree and work in full-time at the college, which I am on the contract with for another year, I won't be able to have one hundred percent commitment to the Dayton P D department, P D department, like I hoped for back in April when the test came out. I do appreciate this incredible opportunity and process which was presented to me. Thank you for your time and consideration. So unfortunately, she, she won't be able to be one of our police officers, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rescind the appointment of Samantha Maguire to the Dayton Police Department.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Accept the recommendation from the highway superintendent and approve purchase of enclosed trailer. So we were all given the information on this trailer. Any questions about?
This is the trailer to use to transport voting equipment, correct?
And this is the one that, the monies were approved the last special town meeting for this.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
I have no questions, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we award the bid for the trailer to Wright Trailers Incorporated of Seaconc, Massachusetts, in the amount of five thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars.
Second.
Is that the correct figure?
Yes.
I'm trying to discern that as well.
No, I think.
It says the grand total, six thousand, does that sound right?
Six thousand two hundred twenty-five, and I'm, I'm wondering if he's selecting new. Because for the new trailer, it's the six thousand figure, for the used trailer, it's five thousand two hundred.
Okay, so it's, so I rescind, I rescind that motion, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we award the bid for the trailer to Wright Trailers Incorporated of Seaconc, Massachusetts, in the amount of six thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Grant permission from the Board of Selectmen for residents to acquire materials from the transfer station. Do we have anything on that? Who's making this request?
It's actually from Superintendent Ferry as well, but this is a procurement type thing, so when we have materials that are surplus, even if it's a tree chopped down on the side of the road, it's still property of the town, you need to declare surplus. In a conversation, I found that the town hasn't designated this ability since before the Board of Selectmen and Board of Selectmen's were off, so it's a little bit of housekeeping. I'm looking for a new vote, just to verify that we're still okay with residents coming in to the transfer station. So the vote would be to declare surplus of compost, wood chips, compost and firewood, which is all under forty tons anyway, and under, what's it, cords, however many cord, and then allow residents with transfer station stickers to come remove it as they need.
Somebody want to move?
All right, and I'll, I'll second that.
I don't know how to.
I'll second it. I, I got a question for discussion.
Yeah, I also have a question.
Since we're, we've declared that, those materials surplus, is there anything left over from the auction that we could offer to the public?
There's, there might be one thing, but it's all junk, it was office, like, equipment, like phones and stuff that the individual.
Oh, okay, you'd need a system for.
And it's useless.
Okay, I didn't know if there were any desk chairs or whatever.
No, nothing like that, all of the stuff that was used, I'm happy to report that that it all went, it was very successful, all of the lots were given, there was one that they never paid, and so basically it doesn't get released, but it wasn't useful.
Okay.
And I think all those involved who worked on that, it was a massive undertaking, very successful for the town.
Any further discussion? If not, yep.
I, I, it's not really a question, so this is just a formality, because I got a transfer station sticker probably two months ago, and when you get the sticker, the attendant tells you, you know, they have wood chips and you, so people have been.
People have been doing this all along. This is essentially to make me feel better, because your vote had, it, it might not have been your specific vote, but it occurred before the Board of Selectmen and Board of House.
Yeah, I don't recall ever.
So that's a while.
Yeah.
And honestly, to make me happy, I would like it to be done maybe annually, that we just vote that this becomes surplus property, but technically it's, it belongs to the town, even if it's a tree, it belongs to the town again, and you need to declare surplus for people to get it.
Sure, why do you feel it should be annually, though? Why can't we just vote that any surplus wood chips?
Because we're going to annually put more wood chips in there. This doesn't mean, if you don't want to do it, you don't have to, just my opinion.
So, talking about wood, what they do now, I'm thinking of, of the last time I saw them, well, the last storm we had, there was a giant tree that fell on Pearl Street, and so eventually, you know, they cut it up and pushed it back to open the road, but quite often what the highway department does is cut it down and leave it on the side of the road, and people take it, so this vote would also mean, now, I don't want them to lug everything back to the transfer station if it's convenient for people to pick it up along the road. The other place that I remember was the, the little, the park in front of the Mount Hope Mill, they took down a big tree there, and, you know, people just drove by and said, hey, I'll take it. So this vote will be a blanket vote.
For that type of instance.
Okay.
So not necessarily at the transfer station, but it's, it's somewhere.
Well, we stop pile, like, the wood chips, the compost, that's all there, because we meant to make a separate motion about the tree branches and such on the side of the road, you know, in the event that the, in the event that the highway department leaves down wood.
It's a big, yeah.
Okay. I'm.
I think we need to vote on the.
And then make a second.
On the transfer station.
All right, I'm going to withdraw the second.
Okay.
Okay, I would, I would draw my motion.
Okay. So I will make a motion that the Board of Selectmen declare surplus wood chips, and what's the other stuff at the landfill?
Compost.
And compost at the transfer station landfill, and it's available to the public, free of charge.
Second.
But you must take it yourself.
And you have to have the sticker.
Yes, you have to have the sticker to get in there.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen declare surplus wood, trees, materials of, like that, that the highway department would take down as a, as a result of either disease or storm damage, and it would be available to the public pretty much where it is, where it falls. It's kind of a long one.
They're going to sneak in this room.
I got to work on that one. Karen, I'll, I'll straighten out that language.
So is this also on private property, then, people can go onto, at the tree?
Well, if the highway department takes it down and it's on private property, if the private property owner doesn't want it, then it's in effect surplus, and, and they're offered it first. In the case of that big tree on Pearl Street, there was nobody occupying the property, and, so they cleaned everything up.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned about people going on private property to liability insurance and everything else, the homeowner may have some responsibility for that, so a little troubled by that.
I guess I'm confused, because the highway department wouldn't leave it on private property unless.
I would think they wouldn't.
Unless if somebody's taking.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't go on to, if they take a tree down, it's not on private property.
Right.
Right? As I said.
Essentially left in the town's layout, that, like, this stuff left over.
Yes, yes.
Well, and I was thinking, when we started the discussion, it was like a tree on the side of the road, and the side of the road is just like public, you know.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Review proposed changes to the Board of Selectmen's rules and regulation policy. Is this per our conversation regarding the agenda, changing agenda a little bit?
We have some discussions, I, I already sort of named it through with Karen, to try it out, we moved the minutes up a little bit earlier, but announcements, I don't think people are really watching our whole meeting and then getting their announcements, so I had the idea that potentially they would be shared at the beginning, and I didn't know how you felt about that.
Do you have any?
Nope. And this is item ten, which starts on page two, and so we would change around where, like, the minutes, because this already says announcements are under correspondence, so we've been moving, and like, tonight you'll see it with correspondence acknowledging minutes and then announcements, so we've moved some stuff around. I, I just, we've kind of thrown a peeler out there.
Yeah, we had a conversation about this, and I was in favor of having announcements earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, I think that's okay, I'm thinking maybe after the moment of silence?
Unless, well, after.
Before public input, maybe?
Well, what I'm thinking of is moment of silence, and then if we have a hearing scheduled, we've got to do it anyhow, so if we do it after, if we don't have any hearings, then we do it after moment of silence and before public input, because people might have questions in public input about the announcement you made.
So right before public input, is that?
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah, but a scheduled hearing would supersede announcements, if we have any.
I'm also thinking, just to have to avoid making a motion to move something out of order, Mr. Chairman, maybe we can just have a practice when someone is going to be appointed, like we appointed Mrs. Mello this evening, maybe we can have that always be under the appointments, and have it be something at the beginning, because we know, we usually move those things out of order. That might help, too.
I'm going to make a, a suggestion also. I find number four, appointments confusing. Mrs. Santos really was a presentation, so I'm going to suggest that number four, if we have them, would be presentations. Appointments would be appointments of personnel or appointments to committees and things like that.
I think they were using it as generic, because Mrs. Santos was to be here at a certain time, so she had an appointment, so.
Right.
Yeah, it is a little confusing, but I understand why it's there.
How about scheduled items?
Yeah, I think that's vague enough.
Well, every, every item's scheduled, so.
What did you say, items scheduled?
All the items are scheduled, I mean, whoever.
Time, like, yeah, I don't know the exact verb yet.
I'll just wait on that, I think I'll.
So do we want to address this at the next meeting, maybe, or do we want to?
Well, I think when I just vote to do that, I will change these two pages and update my call.
We can approve it at time?
I'm thinking if you agree, you're talking about announcements, you can approve it tonight, and then I would do the changes and update the call.
Okay, do we need to re-sign it?
It's only two pages that don't affect the signature page, other than maybe spacing, so I have to check that.
Okay.
And I would change the, on the cover page, we say revisions, we know are revisions, so I would note that date.
I really don't think we even need to necessarily change number ten, except for the announcements, because I think where it says time-scheduled hearings or agenda items, we can consider an appointment is a time-sensitive agenda item, so I think that's vague enough. So I think that's vague enough. I think we should just move announcements up as we discussed earlier.
Should, should we designate, if we're not gonna call them presentations, should we have scheduled appointments and personnel appointments? 'Cause if you just say appointments, an appointment, an appointment meaning you've got a date and time to show up is one thing, but if you say it's a personnel appointment, it could be a committee, a board, an employee, just to designate that. And, and where we've had the scouts come in and make their, you know, their presentations about their projects. Uh, so that would be good, I think.
So entertain a motion then.
Okay, so Mister Chairman, I will make a motion that we move announcements up on the agenda to follow time scheduled hearings or agenda items and before public input.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Aye. Okay. And Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, that the town administrator, uh, consider designating, um, appointments, uh, not designate, identifying appointments, uh, as either presentations or personnel appointments on the agenda. At her, her judgment.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Aye.
So we got a correspondent, Dear Board, I am writing this letter to inform you that effective on December first, twenty nineteen, I will be appointing one new member to the Call Firefighters ranks. The new member is Dylan Stres, Streese?
Streese.
Dylan is yet another Call member that comes to us from our junior firefighters program. If you have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the appointment by Chief McGee of Dylan Streese to the Call Firefighter ranks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Aye.
He's done a very good job recruiting, uh, Call Firefighters.
Well, and I think if you recall when, um, we selected Chief McGee to be the permanent, uh, Fire Chief, that that was one of his goals. And I think he's really, um, he's delivered on that. So, good work, Chief.
Exactly. Yes, he certainly has.
Uh, next item. Dear Chairman, Karen, Zoning Board, Town Clerk and Board of Selectmen, I am writing to inform you of my resignation effective December second, twenty nineteen. I would like to work my normal schedule these last two weeks in order to facilitate an easier transition. I do have thirty hours of vacation and some comp time remaining, however, and would like to receive reimbursement for them in my final paycheck. Thank you very much for the opportunity to work with you and serve the town of Dayton. I wish you all the best. Sincerely, Nicole Skylisten, Office Manager.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I move that we accept the resignation from Nicole Skylisten effective December second, with thanks and appreciation for her work.
Second.
Second. In discussion, I was involved when, uh, I was the chairman of the zoning board of appeals. I interviewed, uh, Nicole with other candidates as well as the town administrator, and she was an excellent candidate for the, uh, the zoning board. So I know she's gonna be missed. Uh, they're in the middle of a forty B and everything else. Timing is, it's not good for the CBA. But she's an, was an excellent and is an excellent worker, and I wish her the best in the future. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Aye.
When that position is to be filled again, who is going to do that? Is that the, the zoning board, running the posting by the union? Like, how does?
So far, it was as a board, and, um, we had the advantage of having a very experienced chair at that time. I haven't reached out to Chairman Karen, but I would like to be a part of that, posting and all of that. So it's a conversation to be had.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Selectmen's reports.
Uh, last Thursday was the, uh, first meeting since last spring of the Attleboro, Greater Attleboro-Tonton, uh, Housing Consortium. And, uh, the biggest news I have coming out of that is that the ten thousand dollar assistance, up to ten thousand dollars assistance for first time home buyers who qualify, the now, the amount has now been increased to up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Again, uh, for those who qualify, and, uh, anyone who thinks they may be eligible should get in touch with the consortium. They are located at Forty-Five School Street in Tonton. And, um, Pro Homes is still the company who does the orientation and counseling to determine if a, if a, uh, person or a party, uh, is eligible. The other thing is they are looking for homes that can be rehabilitated, uh, multifamily homes, uh, two, three families homes, and there is money available to do that. And again, um, anyone who thinks they may have property that can be redeveloped into something or in need of, uh, repair, just get in touch with the Greater Attleboro-Tonton Housing Consortium. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, uh, a number of times during the summer, I reminded people that the Pan Mass Challenge was going to be coming through town the first weekend in August, and I did get a report of the final, this is the two oh one nine wrap-up. The riders actually raised sixty-three million dollars in that bike ride. Uh, this was from Eric Keller, who is the, one of the riders that, that I support. Uh, his team is Hellas on Wheels. And he and his nephew rode this year a hundred ninety-two miles, and they actually broke a record themselves. They were able to raise over twenty thousand dollars between the two of them. So they, they were very happy. But, uh, thank you, everybody who supported PMC in any way at all, whether you contributed, whether you were out on the streets of Dayton waving and cheering them on. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, very good cause. Um, I just have a couple of handouts. I told you that, um, at the MMA meeting, uh, we talked about, uh, Doc Sky's legislation. And I just give these to you. These are workshops that my committee, the committee I serve on, will be having at the annual meeting. So this is kind of an advance notice if you're thinking about what's happening and what you might wanna consider. And the other thing that I have is the municipal best practices for streetlight conversion. And I talked, I gave this to Mary and Sue today, and, um, I think Dr. Z has talked about this because the streetlights have been changed to LEDs. And, uh, yes, you can pass this out for the, for the board.
Yeah.
And, um, not only have the lights been converted, uh, they have a grant, uh, that's been approved that they will be getting thirty-three thousand dollars to help cover the cost of the work that's been done. And they told me that the monthly bill for electricity for streetlights has dropped by almost two thousand dollars a month. So that's the Dayton Electric Light District, so.
Oh, they already did it?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I got an extra paper.
Yes. Um, so, uh, that's, that's just information more about that. Uh, there are a number of communities represented on the MMA committee that, um, they've done changes, are they looking at changes? And so the Doc Sky information is still out there and, uh, looking at it.
That's really good news. I think, um, when we started embarking on green communities, the committee at that time was thinking that one of the ways we could use the money was to do the lighting. But as you know, when we did the energy reduction plan, it was only like four or seven percent of the energy costs actually came from the street lighting. Um, and I spoke to Selectman Costello, um, in Rehoboth probably a couple of months ago, and he was saying that they had replaced, now, they have a lot less streetlights than we do over there, but he was saying that National Grid did it basically for free. And I think probably the Electric Light District had caught on to that, which is why they were able to do it, which is, I think is like fantastic, so.
So, uh, Mrs. Naderis told me that they had the, uh, the agreement, I guess, to get the money reviewed by, uh, Attorney Gay, and everything was good, and they're looking forward to getting the reimbursement. So, uh, are you gonna give a report on our joint meeting with Rehoboth?
I was just gonna mention, not necessarily report, but mention that the three of us, at request of Dr. Z, uh, he wants to, uh, begin the quarterly meetings with the board of selectmen in Rehoboth, and we had our first meeting with them, uh, this past Mon- Monday. All three of us attended. Uh, they've been invited to come to our town, uh, in three months, so we may end up meeting with them sooner. And I thought it was, uh, well, uh, with attending, and I'm, I'm glad you asked to start this process again. I did not participate in the past, but I think it's good that we have so much in common with, uh, Rehoboth that we, uh, sit down together and, uh, discuss. So, thanks.
And I think also, um, because it, this was new for you, you got to see the kind of, uh, topics that if something, you see something that you wanna bring up. Um, I will just mention to the folks who live up in the Chestnut Street, uh, North Street area, you're not far from Reynolds Avenue. And there is going to be a, uh, large substation built by National Grid. It's actually in Rehoboth, but the town of Dayton was notified because we're, we're in a butter within so many feet of that station. And that's really to provide a constant, reliable supply of electricity to the town of Rehoboth. Uh, I just asked for some details about what it was. E, I mean, we got the notification and all the plans, but, uh, that's basically what it's about.
Thank you.
I don't think people in Dayton can watch that meeting unless they go onto the website. So just for, if anyone's curious, um, we spoke about, um, ca, uh, their process in Rehoboth for, um, approaching cannabis industry, um, when they're approached. Um, they, interestingly enough, they ended up limiting their permits to one. Um, so, and someone came in, so they granted that one permit. Um, and we also, what else did we talk about, Mister Chairman?
They actually have a grow, they have two. They've issued one, and there could be a grow facility is the other.
Yeah, it's gonna be a recreational medicinal, and it's gonna be a growth also.
Yeah.
But they limited it to two in total.
But it's all in, no, it was, they're all, I think that's all one, that's one business.
One, one business, I think.
Oh, okay.
That's, they're doing both.
Yeah, you were, yeah, you were the one that brought that up, and they really got into the weeds of the, uh, cannabis issue. So Dayton has, and we have unlimited, the number we're gonna let the market, which I think is a wise idea, let the market decide. Uh, and presently, we have two host agreements, and hopefully, uh, they're both going forward.
And the one in Rehoboth's gonna be located on Route Six. What they mentioned was one in each zone, industrial zone and highway zone. So that's why I thought there were two. That was my question. Only by special permit, and the issuing authority over there is the board of selectmen, so. Uh, but it was, I, I guess the meeting lasted maybe thirty minutes or so, and it was a good exchange of information.
Yeah, they had a big agenda that, that night also. They were gonna, after us, it was, they were gonna discuss the, uh, their tax rate, so. But we were given, uh, half an hour. That's probably all we needed, and we'll probably do the same here. And there was also a discussion on the, uh, the school committee and, and pending things that are going on with the school, so. Uh, correspondents, we received a letter from, uh, DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation. Dear Municipal Officials, the forestry, the Forest Legacy Program, FLP, was established in nineteen ninety as a federal-state partnership to promote the long-term integrity and protection of privately owned forest lands. Since its inception, the program has awarded millions of dollars each year to fund land conservation projects that support traditional forest uses, including economic development through forest woods products and forest jobs, maintenance of public water supplies, recreational opportunities, and critical wildlife habitat. While the Commonwealth has large forest, uh, legacy areas which are able to access the program funding, vital regions where our forests are most threatened by conversion are not currently designated and cannot benefit from this funding source. The Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation is updating the state's Forest Legacy Program Assessment of Needs and has completed an evaluation to identify privately owned woodlands that are under threat of fragmentation and conversion to non-forest uses. As a result of this assessment, we are proposing an expansion of the Forest Legacy Area to make FLP grant funding available for the conservation of more Massachusetts' important forests. Forest legacy destinations in your town would allow access to another funding source for potential forest conservation projects that involve willing private landowners. There is no regulatory structure imposed on the area, and no land owner is obligated to participate. If you would like to help our application to expand our foresty legacy areas, please provide a letter of support of the inclusion of your town in the Massachusetts Forest Legacy Era. Letters should be sent to Lindsay Nyström for more information on the Forest Legacy Program in Massachusetts, and a map of our current forest legacy areas. Please visit www.mass.gov slash DCR slash forest dash legacy.
Mister Chairman, um, I make a request that I be allowed to take this to the Stormwater Committee and see if they would like to participate in preparing a draft that will come back to the board. I think this is worth pursuing. We have town forest, and we have certainly an open space and recreation plan where we have, have and are continuing to acquire, uh, forested land. So, um, uh, that's a request if the board agrees.
I would agree. Do we need a motion for that, or can we just let you?
I'll make, Mister Chairman, uh, I make a motion that the board approve my request to take this letter to the Stormwater Committee for review and a draft response to come back to the board of selectmen.
Is there a second?
What were you gonna say?
I will wait for discussion.
Okay, second, for discussion?
Any discussion?
I was just gonna ask, um, would you do that in addition to the board of selectmen sending their own letter of support, or just the town as a whole?
No, no, no. Well, we could, um, I'd like to do, um, it, you know, it could be a joint letter signed by, uh, I'm the chairman of that committee, and by Mister Pacheco, from the town with the support of the Stormwater Committee. I got a brochure from a professor at UMass Amherst, the, the one that you returned to me. And I wanna get some more of those so that we can pass them out for informational purposes, but I was thinking of that when I read this letter. Uh, so, so, um, my thought behind the motion is we'll discuss it and come back to the board and, um, see if it, if, how the committee feels, should we do this separately, uh, to get more support, or should we do this? 'Cause they're talking about the town, and I'm thinking, uh, it would be good if we did it as a, as a community. But I, I just wanna see how they feel because, of course, that brochure from the professor at UMass talked about the importance of trees and, um, taking carbon out of the air and, you know, uh.
It was fascinating. I read that.
Uh-huh. It was easy to read, too. I thought it would be good for schoolchildren.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
I did wanna mention one thing. I should, it slipped my mind. I should've said it under Selectmen's report. So, um, we had a meeting with the Agricultural Commission last night. Um, it was a public meeting, of course. There was a, um, resident complaint because a resident had a cow in a, um, in an area that was probably too small. Um, and so a discussion happened where the commission decided that, um, we will pursue some sort of minimum standards and also an education program where we can educate residents, um, because right to farm is more than just I can have whatever animal, however many animals. Um, we really want, um, people to know that the Agricultural Commission does weigh, of course, people's right to farm, but also animal safety and animal health. Um, so we will be pursuing those minimum standards, and I'll keep everyone up to date.
And while we're discussing that, I still have a rooster. If anybody wants to take my rooster, I would appreciate it.
Is, is this a pet?
It is not a pet.
Is it a stray that you took in?
My, uh, my, uh, grandson, uh, they had some eggs in his class, and only two of the twenty-one eggs, uh, hatched. And he offered, because he knows I have chickens, that I take the two chicks. One was a hen, and one was a rooster. Uh, when I buy, when I buy chicks, I buy pullets, and they're hens. Ninety, ninety percent of the time, they end up being hens. So this was a fifty-fifty, and it worked out, so I.
So do you only have one chicken?
No, I have six hens and one rooster.
Oh, you got this rooster.
And I can't put the rooster with the hens because.
He's trouble.
He's trouble.
How old is it? Like, how long has it?
It's about a year and a half now. It's, it's probably, uh, the, the meat would be tough if somebody chose to make soup with it or, or whatever.
Oh, I'm gonna take him out of his home. He's probably comfortable there.
I'm not su, sure about that. But anyway, I digress. Yeah. Acknowled, acknowledgements, uh, Primetime has received a donation of thirty dollars. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town account and deposited in the Primetime Gift and Donation Account. So thank, uh, that person very much for the donation.
Oh, uh, Mister Chairman, I make a motion. We acknowledge the donation, uh, the anonymous donation of thirty dollars to the Primetime Donations Gift Account.
A second?
A second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Minutes, except for review, the minutes of the regular board of selectmen's meeting of November thirteenth. Minutes, except for review, the minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting of November thirteenth, twenty nineteen. So we haven't received that, but we're going to get that.
I guess I have it reading.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept for review the minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting of November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of October twenty-third.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting of October twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Announcements. A town-wide parking ban is now in effect from November first to April first of next year. No person shall allow any vehicle to remain in the street so as to obstruct snow removal. Police will take notice. Dayton Holiday Committee Lights On Event will be held on November thirtieth, twenty nineteen, at Town Hall, beginning at three-thirty. This is a free event, and all town residents are welcome to attend. So there is a storytime, so three to four, three-thirty to four, there's a storytime with Mrs. Claus. Four o'clock, four forty-five, the Dayton-Rehoboth High School Musical Ensemble will play. Four forty-five to five o'clock, the Dayton Elementary School Chorus will be singing. In five to five fifteen, Carol, Caroline with Dignitaries, that's us. And I understand that the songs have been printed for us, so that those of us who don't know the words will have it for us. Five fifteen to five thirty is parade, five thirty is the Lights On. And also, five thirty, Dayton-Rehoboth Marching Band will perform. There will be hot cocoa, coffee, hot dogs, popcorn, and cake available. Thank you to the following for their donations and help, Arujos Farm and Dayton Lions. I understand there's going to be hot dogs there, so, and there's going to be more hot dogs. I guess we ran out last year, but there's going to be more this year, so that'd be great. And also, the Dayton Community Food Bank will be accepting donations at this event. So hope to see everybody, everybody there for that event. The annual Stuff for Cruiser event is being held on Saturday, December seventh, from nine AM to two PM at the Old Town Hall, so it's out here in the parking lot. I understand that they now have a Facebook page, is that, did I see that today?
They have an event, yeah.
And so please feel free to bring some new items, toys, stuff like that.
And clothing.
Clothing. The Dayton Historic Society, and as I've mentioned numerous times, I'm a member of the Dayton Historic Society. I'm an officer. None of the officers or members get paid. So I, I'm active in the Dayton Historic Society. The Dayton Historic Society's open house will take place on Saturday, December seventh, from one to four PM at the Society's Wenzel Davis Museum at twelve seventeen William Street. Primetime Adult Care is seeking clients. If you know of someone who would benefit from meeting new friends, trying new experiences, and staying active, please call Primetime at five oh eight, six six nine, six two seven two. And the Town of Dayton Holiday Party will be held on Wednesday, December eighteenth, at Town Hall. Is it going to be here? It's going to be here, Old Town Hall. Will have a late, and Town Hall will have a late opening at ten AM on that date. Approval of the warrants.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention, when you said hot dogs. When I was at the Housing Consortium meeting last Thursday, Mr. Howland was there, Jim Howland, and he was, I guess he was the chief cook and water washer at the Lions Arts Festival. He told me they ran out of hot dogs and hamburgers. They sold over a thousand of each, and they could have sold more. So there had to be thousands of people there. I mean, just, the numbers was amazing. Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Warrant twenty-one A dash twenty in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars, fifty-five cents payroll. Twenty-one B dash twenty, two hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred fifty dollars, forty-four cents. Twenty-one C dash twenty in the amount of four hundred twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and two dollars. And twenty-one D dash twenty in the amount of one million, three hundred two thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars, seventy-one cents. The DR assessment, the last three being accounts payable, be approved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Public input? Nothing else? Nothing to add?
Well, nothing, maybe one question. What time does your rooster alert the neighborhood?
What was that, please?
What time does your rooster alert the neighborhood?
If I, if I take my dog out at four o'clock in the morning, which I have, it'll start crawling.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Would you be interested? I'm not sure if you can have one at where you are. It's worth a shot, though. I'll entertain a motion, if there's no other, nothing else before us, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Clay.